States of America and to your republic, for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone. Donna England here, Chief Leclerc.
Here.
Jeff Stevens.
Here.
Terry Jenke. Captain Smith. Del Fawn.
Here.
Dave Mackey.
Here.
Jennifer Sow. Here. And we have Tenon's superintendent and Jessica Penwell. Thank you all. This is Heather Snapper tonight. And we move on. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make the motion, or?
Do we have a discussion? Our favor.
Aye.
Code abstaining, motion carries. We're going to move on now to public comment. Oh, no. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah. Sorry. We need a recommendation for appoint Acting Secretary in the absence of Tara Jenke. July 16, 2022.
I'm, I'll make a motion to appoint Dave Mackey. Acting Secretary. In the absence of Tara.
And I will discuss. And do we have a discussion on it?
It's a one night gig, right?
Okay. It's one night. This is the picture, not even that's on.
Dave?
So all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we move on to public comment.
Well, I do. I didn't know if anybody else wanted to go. Okay. So, yes. Okay. Great. Just gonna toss that a little bit.
Amy Bart, Kristen Marty. I'm here for my second meeting since I've been in town. I'm a Dollar Bay, Tamrock City taxpayer. And moderator of Lady Percares Facebook group. And I have needed my reading glasses since last year, so. In 2019. Since the last meeting, you guys, one of the things that was brought up as a topic at the last meeting was the possibility of the millage changing when you go to do the millage renewal question. And that potentially changing from 18 mills to 20 mills. And I did get to learn an hour ago that there's, that the recommendation is to stay with the 18 mills, which is traditional, you know, throughout Michigan. And I just want to share that in the not knowing between the last meeting, which was July 28th, for the budget meeting, and the current meeting, it's really unsettling as a taxpayer and as a patron of the school district. It's unsettling not to know that piece of information, but not to get informed in advance of the meeting. So what I mean by that is, is that I did receive the board packet. As you know, I'm interested in what's going on in Dollar Bay. So I do request the board packet in advance. And the school district sends it out usually hour or less before the meeting. And because I have started going to multiple meetings since I started attending meetings, so I started attending these, as you all know, in 2019 with the bond election, after the bond election passed. I've seen differences in different meetings. And one of the things that I'm realizing, which leads to being unsettled at the time that the public makes comment, is that the board packet is not available far enough advancing of the meeting so that public can comment, can make public comment. And I want to give a contrast. Contrast would be that in the other, in the other place where I pay taxes, in Florida, in their meetings, they'll have a Tuesday meeting and they have the board packet published by Friday. And the board packet is published with all of the attachments. So whether you agree or you disagree, you know, how do you feel about what's going on? You have access to the information. And that way, the public can get notified in at least a little heads up. You could still argue that four days isn't a lot of heads up, you know, for something big that's happening. But at the same time, it does give some meaningful opportunity for public input for those that are interested. Not so in, in Dollar Bay. It's not the case in Dollar Bay. At the township, the board packet gets posted the day of. And this packet, you're lucky to get it like, you know, an hour before the meeting. And that just doesn't allow the public enough time to have a real comment based on tonight's meeting on the agenda items. If you look at your agenda, you'll see items on it. And the one that I'm speaking to about the mill, the actual ballot language was not on the agenda. So even if you got the agenda, which was published today, and so was posted, someone could find it today. You still don't have access to the meeting, the wording that was in the agenda or the millage question that is going to be asked to the voters. But yet it's still being recommended. So I, when I did see it, I felt relieved that you're going for the standard question of 18 mil, which is common in Michigan. But at the same time, it could have just as easily gone to 20 mil that was being recommended after the very brief presentation that we had at the last meeting. So I just want to say that it is unsettling as someone who is trying to get informed on this and stay abreast of it, that the information is provided so briefly in front of it for someone who's even engaged. Anybody who walked in tonight may or may not have access to the board packet at all, wouldn't know what's going on. But I think that the public should have enough notice to actually weigh in when there's a big millage question like this, whether it was a bond campaign a few years ago, that there should be substantive information available well in advance so that people can make a public comment. So I will not be against the 18, you know, the, the campaign, the ballot question as I would have if you had taken the unprecedented step, at least locally, that I'm aware, to go to 20 mil. And I did send you all an email that I showed you example from, from my other taxes where they fell below the 18 mil and there was, seemed to be no issue with it. So I wanted to share that in my public comment about the difference. As I've gone along, you learn a lot about public meetings. I encourage people to go to attend and to be a part of that. And I would really request that the, that the school board consider making the meeting materials available far enough in advance so that the public has, can be informed when they come to the meeting and have their only opportunity at this meeting to make their public comment. Thank you for receiving that.
Thank you for doing that. Okay. We're going to move on to consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the items on consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Yes, please. And then discussion on consent agenda.
I have a question on the library. That was. The library. Yeah. Well, it's the budget, I guess. So I'm looking at that. There's action on this one.
I think it's 20. Expenditure.
When there's something they thought, you know?
No.
So you are looking at, are you looking at the fact that, that the 3460?
Yeah.
No, I, I, I am not 100% sure here, but I think that this is related to the reason I kind of changed to be the budget amount last time, which is just because the, the way that it's budgeted has changed a little bit because our library spends a good part of the time working with small groups on the meeting. And so that just changes how it looks. So we really can't be calling for all of the time here, library time. It was a change that's probably related to that. So that it's, it's coming with response, it, it looks great. Yeah, no, nothing.
So then, this will wrap the all favor.
Aye.
Code abstaining, motion carries. But now we are moving on to our comments.
Okay, summer is in full swing. It just always blows me away how busy things are in the summer. Like, there's not very many people around except for now that the basketball camp going on, there's actually quite a few. But there's just so much to get done in the office in the summer. So Stephanie's been keeping busy. I know that it's going to change in the upstairs office. Um, he had a successful summer school program, which I think Jesse will share more about. So we thank Bill O'Connor for that. And he has a number of middle or high school students that were here for the three weeks following school and getting some credits to cover that they needed and passing us some classes and learning ahead. So thanks to Bill for doing a great job with that. As always, um, summer is always a time with staff turnover. And we need to fill a kitchen assistant position. As you probably recall, last year, we changed things up in the staffing plan in the kitchen and ended up with a few workers who were on a very part-time basis. So one of those folks is stepping aside and willing to post for that. It would really involve several people who move the drill and move the machine and the the place and the huck of all the food so that when somebody needs to be able to put in a stick or whatever, there will always be people standing by. So we're looking forward to the same kind of thing this year. Um, we have posted for other lot of Rachel Griffin's position and she will be moving over to the CCI as the people accounted there. So she will continue to visit us in a different capacity. Um, we do have a new business manager, Tom Sterling. And that's actually the business manager through the ISB. And he is starting this week. He comes to us from telling me that most recently, he worked at the school district there. And Jackie's going to share more, but we're really excited about a special ed hire that we're going to recommend. Three quarter time special ed, one quarter time general ed. A gentleman named Adam Luca. Athletics update. This is related from Sarah Moilenin. Um, we, I wanted to let you know that our co-op with Colton for varsity boys and girls swimming and skiing has been approved by the MHSAA. So that's cool. Let's say anyone takes advantage, but it is now an opportunity for it. Uh, Annie Greb stepped up last year as cheer coach and Sarah helped her out when she wasn't able to be to games. She knows the young lady and unfortunately her schedule not allowing her to continue with this year as cheer coach. So I'm looking for a new cheer coach. Um, Sarah is recommending the hire of Sarah Adet as varsity volleyball coach. So that's really exciting. She has been open for a very long time. And we're really pleased about Sarah because a few years ago, she served at the junior high. Volleyball coaching did an outstanding job, very passionate, very knowledgeable. Um, the kids thrive under her. So we didn't afford more than same and hopefully she'll stick around. Uh, we have an MHSAA resolution in here. It's the same one that we do every summer. If we can, if we can continue to compete and we'll follow the rules. Uh, the Fall JV and varsity sports practices are set to begin already on August 8th. So that really feels like it's a very long corner. And then the junior high sports begin on August 22nd. And all student athletes will need a sports physical completed before they've been practicing. Always fun to get all those in over the summer. Um, the schedules for the 22, 23 school year are being finalized and are being added to the school calendar as they were complete. And we've got a great system down for that, too. And last, there was a wonderful alumni game event here on the 3rd of July. I don't know how many of you were there. I thought several of you. It was so much fun. Boy, the atmosphere was electric, cars parked all the way down the road. Um, lots of sweaty alumni out there playing against the active current teams. And it was so, so much fun. The dunking contest was a real highlight and the three-point contest, all kinds of things. So I know Jesse will share more about that. But it was great timing because the gym painting project was just completed before that. So people got to come in and ooh and ah, how fantastic it looks in there. Which is a transition to my next item. So big thanks to Gabe Olson for taking on the painting of the gym. We've just heard so many wonderful compliments that I think it just looks way better even than I expected. It's really neat. And then also shout out to Ashley Dado, Maggie Don, and Haley Kegges. These are our girls who assisted Gabe in that project. So maybe to come back for many years and say, I did this, that really is. Uh, playground. So last month, I was not here, but I know that Jackie read my report and I know that the topic of the playground was brought up. So just to remind you, we are trying to improve our playground and the various people are very passionately involved in this and wanting it to happen. The PTO has been working to raise money for this for a good part of the year. And they have committed to a minimum of $10,000 in funds. April season of the PTO acquired a second grant on the side that's able to fund. Um, a, a drop shoot kind of thing where the kids can play in the set floor when they're evolving. It's very cool. I enjoy it. So that is funded already and we're just waiting to order that. And hoping maybe to get a nice deal on shipping, depending on how everything else pans out. Um, the existing playground structure can be added on to by this really neat structure that we researched and decided on. It's a good conversation when I work closely with, with, from Kinsura. And it's kind of terrific. It's got this cool net planning structure. It would be much higher than what we've got right now, which the whole kids to use it during the winter months. And so we're hoping to go forward with that. As you know, we applied for a child foundation grant and we have competition. We were warned that right when we said, no, that, like, we'll get your hopes up. And our hopes were dashed. We were not granted that funding, which we were asking for, and that was in March 2000. So I'm just bringing it up now. As you know, we are on a much more solid foundation, funding wise, than we have been in a long time. Um, a lot of people who would really like to see this happen in our community. There is no other playground equipment within five miles. So really, this is the way that we directly serve the people of our community. And I wonder if we should just go forward with it. And one of the general fund, a 40,000, rely on the PTO for that other 10,000. So we talked to that $50,000 cost. And there are a couple more other funding sources that we know about, but just putting it out there, to be honest, that's what I would really like to see happen at this point. I think so many people were down and getting to do a great, great thing for our board to do. Thoughts, questions? No, this is the first time we've heard that, so.
I think we could add that perhaps to a new business.
Okay. Possible for the discussion of both on.
Yeah. I think that's an agenda line item, a discussion of playground expansion or improvement, whatever the word is.
So B, under an open business, I think you made a second on that, is that?
I'll second that.
I don't need any more. Discussion, aye?
Aye. We jumped ahead in the interview.
No, it's okay. I'll just keep on, I'm, I'm still in my report. Okay. Oh, yeah. Okay, so that's, um, that's it, um, for the. Okay, so I thought it would be good to share some more information about this election, being that it's an election year. One thing that will be on the ballot in November is the proposal to our district to continue to levy the 18 mills as the standard on all non-homestead property. So some simple and true information about this. Um, it, it can be confusing and it's haven't come up in several years. It was 2013, the last time the board voted to do this. So it's been quite a while. So don't, don't have that if you're sunny on it, because most of us are. So the Michigan sun school, by way of a foundation allowance, everybody knows that. Everybody in this room, anyway. Every year legislators approve a per people dollar amount for schools to use for operating expenses from day-to-day functions to supplies, employee salaries, utilities, expenses we need to cover in order to operate. All Michigan school districts are required to collect an 18 mil millage to cover the local portion of the foundation allowance. The state assumes that all districts are levying the full 18 mills for local contribution. So the state does not give districts that portion of the foundation allowance that should be covered in the 18 mills that they are supposed to be collecting. They do not give that to us or to any school district that assumes we're gathering that around for local services, which is what they expect us to do. So some Q and A. Who pays the 18 mills? Um, they are non-homestead property tax. This means businesses and people who own rental properties pay the tax. The average taxpayer who lives in a home they own does not pay the tax. How many mills are currently being levied? 18. Our school district has been levying the statutory rate of 18 since 2014. The law only allows districts levy up to 18 mil. Dollar Bay has been levying exactly 18 each and every year since 2014. How many mills does the district sign to levy? Voters approve this in November. As the expectation of the state of Michigan, we hope to continue to levy 18 mils. Levying less than 18 mills will have a direct detrimental impact on our students and our school. Only if we levy and receive the 18 mills will we receive our expected full foundation allowance of 9,150 per people this year. So again, the tax rate right now is 18 mils. If it's approved, it will be 18 mils. And it's a non-homestead tax paid by businesses and people who own secondary properties, for example. Um, and if voters did not approve it in November, that would be extremely unusual. It would mean the school district would miss out on a very large portion of our funding and that some businesses and a few people who own multiple properties in our district would not pay the same tax they've been paying consistently for many years. With a loss of funding, we'd mean the district would have to make major cuts to services and staff. So hopefully that clarifies the 18 mil question to people. I know it's, again, it's been a long time since it's been on our minds and it can be a little bit, a little bit confusing. Um, and as for the process, if the school board needs to bring something before voting, citizens, if this is how it's done, the board defines what the ballot language will be. The board gives notice of the election to the public. And on any additional information, the voters consider the matter and then will revoke on the appointed date. So the board decides to move forward with an election based on need or requirement that simply follows the established process, which is what we've done guided by our true order. So we don't have an election to have an election. We just move forward with the process as advised by true. If anyone has additional questions, like I said, I know it can be a little confusing and it's been a while. Please feel free to let me know. And we will certainly have some written materials to share with folks as they come to fix it. Thank you. Okay. Any questions at this point?
Yeah, so last time, the news was long.
2013, the board voted and 2014 was when that, uh, it was established.
And then it's, it's good for us in timeframe?
Yeah, at that point, it was good for about 10 years.
And that part of, I do that.
And this one is for four years. Yeah. All right. Yep. Thank you. I think that's me. I'm Jesse.
Okay, middle school, high school report. Um, as Christina mentioned, it's summer, but there's still lots happening. Some of the kids, they're still out there doing really great things. So I'll, I'll be quick, but summer school. Uh, we've had four high school students recovering credits. Uh, we have five middle school students recovering key concepts. Bill O'Connor did a terrific job. Um, just, it's a straight for our kids to, like I said, um, kind of recover when they can and what they can um, in, in the summer. So that was a success again. And once again, thanks to Bill for his efforts. Uh, 4th of July festivities, lots happening. I know it was a rainy 4th, but still, we had, as Christina mentioned, our alumni game was the best it's been. So now it's just fun. It's just, you know, we didn't have to call EMS, so that was great. Right, everybody had fun. The gym was packed. Um, and it's, uh, it's just such a good community building event. Um, and it's just a joy to teach you. Um, our kids, but they, uh, they work from the chicken barbecue stand. They pack beans, National Honor Society's giving pack beans on the 3rd of July. Um, you know, we worked in the concession stand on the 4th. Um, all the raised, uh, you know, it's, it's a fundraiser for athletics, but it's just a great time being a part of that community and doing that community work. So hats off to everybody who helped. There's a lot of people who helped from a lot of different places. Um, band update. Uh, our band marched before the rain on the 4th of July. Um, and we combined with the Lake Linden Band at the Strawberry Festival and took second place in the band event. So that was, that was great for our kiddos. Yeah. Um, I'm really excited about Adam Luca. So he's our new special education teacher. Um, it's kind of a combo position, but we think he's going to be, be outstanding. Um, so, uh, we're, we're in the early stages still. We did the interview. He accepted. Um, we're meeting tomorrow to talk a little bit more about what this will look like. But it's a need in our, in our middle school, high school. And Kim, Kim and I have worked last year closely with our special education population. But this is going to be good for us. And we think Adam's got the right disposition for, for his spot. So more to come about Adam, but glad he accepted and we're going to be moving forward there. Um, gymnasium update, what's up? It's just beautiful. If you haven't seen it, go check it out. So the floor, the paint, everything that's going on, yeah, that's, that's really neat. Um, STP, so we have this, uh, last year, we did it over in Hancock. Um, it's something I enjoyed. Um, it was a success and we thought, well, we'll try it here. And it's called Summer Training Program. What we do is we hire coaches for Michigan Tech. So players who play on the Michigan Tech team, um, come on in and coach, um, our kids. So we've got three groups, elementary group, we've got a, a girls' group and a boys' group. And, uh, we're working on just becoming better athletes, stronger. Um, and just, it's, it's great for, for our kids. So we started with day one today. We have 45 students signed up and I see that number growing. Um, so it's, uh, I think it, once again, it kind of fills a need to, I think there's a need for kids to be, you know, doing it, right? Being active, getting in the gym. And, uh, we've got these young kids, are great coaches. So I just, I'm expecting more, more positive things from STP. Um, I'm also excited. We've got this Chromebook Initiative happening that I've been working a little bit with Christina on, um, where we've got 60 Chromebooks being ordered, really at no cost to the district. Um, we're hoping to order some more on the second wave after that to kind of fill some of our Chromebook needs. Um, Chromebooks, just so you guys know, are used in almost every class, almost every day, almost every hour. Um, so, uh, the more we can have, you know, available to us, it's the better off we're going to be as the, the school district and for the young ones. And then, um, lots of work this summer. We're just, we're just doing a lot, like a lot of catch-up things, right? We're updating websites. We're creating, designing new PBIS assignments around the school. Um, we're going to be, Christine and I are going to be attending a prepare training to talk about, you know, constantly updating and changing us, our school safety policies and procedures, protocols in case, you know, in the event of a tragedy. Hopefully that never happens. Um, so a lot of just very, very important, but behind the scenes types of things happening in, in our offices. And then finally, a thank you to Rachel. It's, I was just really sad for me to, to have, see Rachel go. I totally understand it. It's a, it's a good move for her, um, you know, in her new position. It's a step up. And, um, but we're going to miss her. A lot of what Rachel does, no one sees. It's all, and a lot of it's behind the scenes. And, um, I just have really enjoyed working with her and I don't know if she's always gotten enough credit. So thank you, Rachel. We're going to miss her.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Well, we move on to actually discussion items. Consideration and regulation to approve ballot records and call election. Right. So do we have our admission to adopt as presented? Through the motion to adopt a motion and data through our district. That's our decision.
I will.
And I'll second that. And do we have a discussion on this? Oh, all favor.
Aye.
Code abstaining, motion carries. First of all, a recommendation to the new motion to approve the hire of Sarah Adet. Do we have a motion for that?
So support.
Any discussion further? All favor.
Aye.
Thing, motion carries. Now we have, do we have a recommendation to approve the hire of Adam Luca? There are countless more questions.
Yes.
Okay. As two quarter time middle high school special education teacher and quarter time general education teacher. And I will support that. Are we having a discussion?
That's certified and going to be how that works.
Yeah, so he, he is not, he has a degree in social studies. Um, but he is not, he's not a certified teacher at this point. Uh, mother is a teacher. He's looking at, you know, a preschool. And he is, he's very excited to become a teacher. So, um, he's more than be looking at Christine, normal official, or looking at the ISB um, to get to an alternative certification for path.
Yeah, I've mentioned, yeah, many times, it's very hard to find, um, somebody who is available with a special education license. Um, but there are many wonderful people out there and, um, some people are willing to take the plunge. They are very, Kim, Garger, and take classes while they are teaching, while they are learning ropes. And they have to be as well aware of the shortage, especially in this area. So they have a couple of programs, um, that directly support people in this situation. And they will actually cover the costs of the classes needed to get that special endorsement for people who are teachers and even to help obtain a teaching license for people who are just coming into it with some other kind of degree. Adam did start off college as, um, in the teacher prep program and then, um, felt the need to graduate. And so didn't complete the teacher prep part of that, but did still want to be teacher. And so when moving to our area, he got into the preschool environment because actually in this similar situation, you can be a preschool teacher while taking another X round that, while taking classes to obtain that certification. So that's the track he was on. So he's got several credits actually um, toward early childhood. And I'm hoping that some of them somehow will, will count towards this, uh, this new certification that he's going to need. But yeah, if he's ready to go with it and it's really awesome that the ISB is ready to support that as well. I'll say one more thing on, um, obviously we call it. I'll say one more thing, obviously, we call the references and spoke to people about it, everyone definitely saying it's crazy, it's meticulously organized. So that's something you'd be if you're a special ed teacher, that's awesome, and he long-term sucked for a teacher in Illinois. Which is where his home base was, of agriculture, so they had some really neat classes, it sounded like, where they were learning what farming. Also doing some of the growing, planting, that type of thing, so his supervising teacher, who took over for him, just couldn't say enough about him. And that even, even to the last day he gave a test, he insisted on grading the test, he would not leave for one thing to do when she came back, so. Just from outside, it's been a good thing, so we're feeling really great about him. Actually, though, Jeff saying that reminded me too, that he would love to coach, so that is just another selling point, and remain the sport. He's good at it and would love to coach it, so that's really nice to have. Well, he didn't mention volleyball, we still be doing it, JV volleyball. So then we're moving on to all in favor. Okay, all right, all in favor? Opposed, abstain, motion carries. So now we're gonna move on to discuss the posting for my two thirty preschool assistant. So that the third adult in the classroom in order to increase preschool size, class size along to eighteen and provide special needs students. So this is, this is something that was suggested to me last week on the phone by Carlos Strom. Who oversees all of the resuritization programs in the area, and. Well, we were talking about a bunch of different things, and one of them being numbers, and she, she recommended we consider having a third adult in the classroom. As I mentioned before, you need two teaching adults, one being the primary teacher, the director of the program. And then the other being the assistant teacher, who also has to have, has to meet credential requirements. In order to have sixteen preschoolers in the classroom. You can bring that class size up to eighteen, but you need a third adult, they don't need to have any certifications, and in this case, it could be a boarding position. Because they also don't need planning time, which the other two teachers do. This would allow us to lock in the class sides in a good way, we'll always have eighteen students this year already in our roster. If we are able to allow everybody in who is on the various waitlist, because you know, there's always rules about not, not until September second. Can we let people in if they are not four on September first, and not until, I think, you know, people in if they're above two hundred fifty percent COVID level, et cetera, et cetera, very complicated. But this would allow all those students who are on our current list, including waitlists, to get in, of course, at a time soon now then. But the thing that's really been on my mind a lot is we have some, some students with needs coming in. We've got a student with a pretty serious non-go health need. We've got a student with, with NICP, who is going to have some significant need for a lot of one-on-one assistance. And then another student, there's, there's an NICP kind of underway for this student, and it looks like they. Have some significant social emotional issues, all three of these are gonna require quite a lot of attention. And seeing that this person would only need to four days a week, and I don't even know if we'd go this way, because my, my primary concern being the students need. But it was pointed out to me by Carlos, so if you're not over sixteen on any given day, like let's say it's school season, and you only got fourteen kids in there. If that person was needed somewhere else in the building, you know, an emergency coming for a, you know, a person needing some here or there, whatever. That person could do that, because it's, actually, it's our requirement that if there are more than sixteen in the room that day, then we need that third adult, so. That's why I'm bringing that up and suggesting that we go that direction, and I would, I would suggest just for this year, not make it a permanent thing. Let's see how it goes, it will also kind of depend on the roster next year, which could, you know, could be hard to find some of these, wanted some of them for a year. And yet I just, I just don't know if we want to make that punch permanently, you know, we, and especially the teachers would wanna be assessing if this is a good thing or not. They would still be on the support staff contract, so it would be fourteen seventy-five, they would set up. It would, it would just require, maybe it would suggest a high school degree, which is really what, one of the support positions suggested at this point. Not that we wouldn't hire somebody if they were the perfect fit, if they didn't have that to come up, but that's what we look for first, but they wouldn't need. To be taking classes towards licensing, which the assistant does and the regular teacher does. We would be mainly looking for somebody who loves working with that age group and has got a lot of patience and the one part.
I assume the increased headcount would increase the funding behind.
Exactly. If we, if we had the eighteen, you know, we end up with the eighteen in the class, and you know, there's a whole lot that can happen between now and September sixth. But if we do enter for that, it basically is a wash at that point. Now, that's not including, you know, benefits and that type of thing, it's just the wages, but that basic calculations is. I don't know, at first when Carlos Strom suggested, I was like, oh, I can't imagine adding another physician, you know, that's just, you know, expense and everything. And then I thought, well, that's really this now, and we're only on four to the week, and not even necessarily every day needing to be there. You know, if things were able to run smoothly without the person, so I just kind of thought, well, there's not a lot of reason not, that is pretty often discussed. Yeah, I, I, I would definitely want to try. No, if we didn't find someone that would do that, you know, that's the thing, wouldn't be very lucky if we did. I was wondering if there's a grandma out there who'd wanna work four days a week, you know, maybe that's the perfect fit. Yeah, I think it's worth a try, sometimes though, if you need, if we get a motion tonight, I would make that.
I would support it.
Any further discussion on this? All in favor? Thanks, moving on, see recommendations approved twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, MHSAA membership registration.
So, supported.
All right, on discussion on this.
So nothing we haven't done every year.
All in favor? Okay, now we're gonna move on to open the business. Well, there's another calendar week, right? Yeah, yeah, so, oh no, you're right, you're right. Your recommendations to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three school calendar, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion on the calendar? Yeah, I've got a lot to explain right now, there's gonna be a lot of differences with here from previous years. I guess let's just start at the beginning, as you can see, it runs down on the left, first half of the year and second half there in the right column. First start isn't any different than usual, well, actually, last year we had three days, this year it's two, some years it's three. This year it's two, the thirtieth and thirty-first of August, Tuesday and Wednesday. If you recall, we are now able to use a few days if they need further requirements of future professional development. To displace student days, and so these two days before the school year can count as two of those contact days. School starts as always the day after Labor Day, so this year that's September sixth. Then on the twenty-second, we see pink, and that is something new, a one forty dismissal for teacher in service. So all down the left column, you'll see it peppered with pink days, and all down the right column, you'll see that peppered with green days. And we have been twining with this for a little while, and we've had a lot of commentations through the years that we with the high school and middle school and district leadership teams. About the need for teachers to be able to collaborate on a regular and ongoing basis. We are collecting many kinds of data and have not had a good way to explore that, look at it, analyze it. And make decisions based on it with the previous speed and schedules, which just happened sporadically throughout the year perhaps. So our hope was to get something in place that would allow us to meet more regularly, look at data, get, get training, like. We end up actually not regaling to, we, we trained on that, what are we gonna do, if there is no time to open the schedule for that. There's just a lot, a lot of times when we wish we could be talking with each other, we need to, we need to spend more time on vertical alignment of. Some of our content areas, you know, they all went to twelve, we don't have time for us to collaborate and do those kind of things. So we've got to have people come outside of the school day, or have people sub for folks during third period, during other people's prep, so we can make that happen. It's, it's been very cumbersome and very, very, very frustrating, I will say, for me and for many of the teachers who are trying to get things done together. Teachers that really need and deserve professional time with one another, so we're looking at a way to do that. The first iteration of the schedule had two-hour delays only, so the green, the green side on the right was two-hour delays. Then there was some back and forth, some folks preferred the afternoon time, some folks preferred the morning time. So basically, what we ended up with was one half of the year afternoons, the next half of the year mornings, see how it goes, you know, see. See what people end up liking, what works best for teachers, what works best for kids, and then maybe next year, we'll do it all one way, maybe not. Maybe we won't do it at all, but our, our thought is that this is gonna be really beneficial for teachers and therefore very beneficial for the students. So, the one forty we're going to mean that the buses take kids home at that time, and then the teachers, that we go one forty-five, we'll get together. And start their professional development, collaboration work. And then the opposite, on the February to May days, they would come to school for a ten twenty-five start, just like a standard two-hour delay. So we already have the schedule built for that, so that's convenient. My hope is that we'll be able to put something firm in place for childcare for those families with elementary students. Who are working during those times, and we could contribute a bit and then have a safe place for the kids to be, we would not be able to run separate buses for that. We would be, you know, providing transportation, but that's the hope that we would be trying to do. And I guess that's it on the one forty and ten twenty-five, this is one, so any more questions on that part? Okay, so then we do have three parent-teacher conferences throughout the year, high school, middle school, uses all three of those. Elementary does extra time on the October and the January days, and that's what has worked well for those schedules. Two days off for Thanksgiving this year, we are trying, again, based on discussion and some frustration through the year, trying. Exams a little bit different, especially having sixth graders up in the high school, it's a challenge to keep them busy and quiet for an hour and fifteen minutes. Or whatever the exams are, one thirty, one fifty, depending on the day. And also, it was just stated that a lot of schools don't have much more than a standard period anyway for exams, which is already an extended period of seventy-six minutes. So we thought, well, let's see how it goes if we just run exams on a regular day, we'll certainly be flexible if people wanna do it differently, but. The other factor of the matter is a lot of teachers have gotten away from regular exams, and they're doing more projects to finish out the trimester. That might take, you know, three, even up to five days, or special activities, that kind of thing, so. We think that this will go well, we hope it will, and we'll just be watching it this year to see if it does. Now, the end of the year, we'll do it a little bit different, still do those seventy-six minute periods for exams, we don't have the exact schedule, but we do plan to end on a halfway as well this year. Christmas break, winter break, is a little funny, this is one of the things I've set on the CCISD calendar, so I'll just pretend and discuss this. And come up with Christmas break, and then Easter break, winter break, and spring break, so we're starting on a Wednesday, based on the Christmas falls. And then ending on a Tuesday, because people felt like they've gotten feedback from the community in the past, that they like having a couple of solid weekends in there. So this gives us that, it's not three weekends like we've luckily had the last two years, because we've had two straight weeks of Monday through Friday, so that's been nice, but. And hopefully folks will like this, not everybody does, I'm hearing that good feedback already, but that's, that's set in stone by the CCISD. And then as for the spring break, the CCISD's requirement is the third through the seventh. So we did have a little discussion about that Easter Monday, which we have traditionally taken, and so this year. The tenth on the schedule on its red, but if you look at how it's defined around the left, it says flex day for snow day makeup. So, if we have more than six snow days, then we do need to make up a day at the end of the year, and this is now built in. So that if by April tenth, we have more than six, we can make up a day and bring that day back at that point, makes sense, everybody? And the twenty-fifth is a half day for open house, like it has been in recent years, and I think that's all the interesting stuff on this calendar. So there was a lot of discussion, a lot of back and forth, a lot of making concessions and, and talking things through. But hopefully this will be a good one, and everyone will be happy to move forward with it, and have a great year. Okay, so now we're gonna open the business, get like directors type in discussion. I would, I would like to represent, to say, and increase to ten thousand dollars. Really, this job, this last one, a lot of time to do, if you know, later, the education chair has done such a phenomenal job, so.
I support them.
Do we have any discussion?
Well, I just think it needs to be stated publicly that the athletic director, what she does, isn't just for the athletes. The band gets a chance to perform for an audience, the senior class, or whoever it is, gets to have fundraisers, concessions. It's, it's more than just sports, but I'm not sure the record does work.
It's a ton of coordination. It's a ton of time.
I have a motion, next second, we have more discussion on it.
I had made the motion that we. Funded the playground improvements expansion to the fullest extent of the budget possible, up to forty thousand dollars. If, if we have to come in under that, that should be it.
We're gonna work on that, I'm gonna put my best negotiating skills with that, I'm sure a ref, but.
I would support that with the addition that we do that, and still continue to address trying to do additional grants. Grant funds to help this.
So you're seconding that? With the encouragement to continue to.
We would offset those costs if we're pursuing.
Yes, yeah.
Plus for the school and plus for the community.
Well, if the board approves this, then I, I will get a hold, actually, I tried contacting them this week to see where we were at. And my particular rep that I was working with is not in the office this week, so I'll be getting ahold of them soon and say, how soon can we have this here? I'm guessing that the timeline won't allow us to install this summer, because of just the delays we're facing with COVID and all. And even last spring, if we were able to order it in March, it was, it was still, you know, if we would be able to get it in the summer. But I'm hoping that all installation will work out. And the PTO would really like to get that drop, what's it called, drop chute. Covane in there as soon as possible, ideally this summer, but again, that depends on other factors, like for example, if we order to mature. And that would end up in free shipping, then we'll have to wait a little on that coming. if we order through mature, and that would end up in pre-shipping, then we'll have to wait a little bit on that coming, because in this particular, and a lot of gas prices and all. But basically, it would be as soon as possible, I do leave by the time the snow lasts. Any other question? All favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Let's find you a motion for German. On the motion. See, try to get. Can you second that up?
Sure.
And if there's any discussion on that, all approved.
Alright.
Motion carries. Thanks, everyone. Have a good evening, everyone. Enjoy the summer while we have it.
Yeah. Yes.
Can you, should teachers come stay a second? Pass for us?